Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, August 16, 2023. Joanna, can we roll call, please?
Present.
Here.
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 Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and always.
First item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, request for a special use, 83 Ambrogio Drive.
Hello. So, the first item tonight is for special use. Mr. Said Mubasher is seeking a special use permit to open a small internet-based vehicle dealership in a multi-tenant building located at 83 Ambrogio Drive. The subject property is located within Gurnee Business Center PUD with dual underlying zoning districts of C2, or Community Commercial, and I2, General Industrial. The 2015 zoning code comprehensive update has divided vehicle dealerships into two categories. One where the operation is entirely enclosed, that is allowed by right, and one where the operation has outdoor storage and display that is allowed by a special use permit. Because the Gurnee Business Center PUD has a use list that specifies that auto sales and service requires a special use permit, this process must be followed of special use, even though Mr. Mubasher's operation is fully enclosed. So, a mix of uses including retail office, light, general industrial, and warehousing are located within the building at 83 Ambrogio, as well as surrounding buildings on Ambrogio Drive. The petitioner is here in attendance with us and will present and will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. As this particular item, as I mentioned, is a public hearing, I would request that you stand and be sworn in. You need to be sworn in.
The testimony you're going to give this evening is...
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to you. If you can please just restate your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mubasher Said, the applicant for the special use permit.
Okay, and if you can just give us a brief description of...
Oh, yes. So, I am the applicant for the special use permit to allow for vehicle sales, automotive sales, at 83 Ambrogio Drive, Unit Number C. I do have a little presentation here-
Sure.
-that I can kind of illustrate business operations. So, if you can do the next slide, please. Just a little introduction. I want to go over, again, my basis that I want to establish and get a special use permit for the operation of internet-based enclosed vehicle dealership. After that, I have some information on the property itself, day-to-day business operations, zoning ordinances, and impact to surroundings. So, the property information. So, the property resides on an industrial park zone C2 and I2 PUD. The property is leased. I am leasing a unit. The owner is Marlin Management. There is ample amount of parking available at the business park. The entire complex is roughly 22,500 square feet, which I got this off Google, so please don't quote me on this. The drive-in door, there's a drive-in door for the warehouse. The rest of it is just open warehouse space with 14 feet tall ceilings. There is a separate entrance for the office, as well as two restrooms present. This is a little image of the property from the exterior. The unit itself is about three units over into the center. Next slide, please. Business operations, online-based auto sales. I know this hasn't been pretty relevant in the, you know, I would say 10, 20 years ago, but now it's become more of a relevant thing, where internet-based auto sales, kind of like you probably have at Carvana, stuff like that, you know, those are the big shot ones like Amazon, but, you know, it is becoming a new norm for auto sales to be completely online. Business operations, sorry, hours of operations Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., with at least one employee present, no auto repair, auto washing, or outdoor storage of any kind. Everything will be enclosed. There will be customer parking available in the case that a customer does decide to walk in. We do push for virtual test drives only, but if the customer would like to come in and, you know, do a physical test drive, they are more than welcome to do so. And the test route, the test drive route that I will propose is coming off of Ambrogio onto Washington, going to 41, to either Grand, or down south and back, not going through the neighborhood or anything. The business will require an Illinois State Dealer License, which I will obtain upon approving, approval of this special use permit. Next slide, please. A few of the zoning ordinances I want to go over. So, C2, I2, which is the zoning that allows for automotive sales, is what this property is zoned. However, it is within a PUD, and I'm not too familiar with Gurnee's ordinances and how PUDs work, but from what I was told is that since a PUD was written back in the 80s, it did not specify automotive sales and service to be in outright allowed use, and rather was a special use permitted use, that you need to gain a special use permit for it first. And, you know, there are other, multiple other enclosed vehicle dealerships, you know, operating in the Village of Gurnee. Next slide, please. And I just wanted to say a few words about your zoning articles. One is Article 8, Section 29, which outlines the allowed, or the ordinances for automotive sales. And amongst those, looking at that criteria, I want to say that, you know, just a few words from my point of view on my business, that there will be no repair work done on premise at all. All repairs will be contracted. There is no fueling facility. There is no outdoor display, you know, hence no open hoods. And the ads are on the, no open hoods or ads on the vehicles themselves, no wrecked, inoperable, or unregistered vehicles, no balloons or attention-getting devices, and signage is limited just to a front door banner, a vinyl sticker on the front door. And there was another part to your zoning article, specifically focusing on the special use permit application, and in that, it addresses that if we were to grant this special use permit, would it impact the nearby businesses? Would it cause any sort of harm or endanger anyone in the nearby vicinity? And, you know, the answer is no. Everything is enclosed, and the use is compatible with, you know, the general land use of adjacent properties. And it's consistent with zoning ordinances. Like, as I mentioned earlier, the property is zoned C2 and I2, and if the PUD wasn't there, then I wouldn't need to get the special use permit. It would just be allowed by right. And lastly, I want to cover if, you know, if it does end up being in question. As I mentioned earlier, I do, I am required to obtain Illinois Dealer License to conduct this type of a business. And I just wanted to go over the coverages for this type of a business that the state mandates, which is, you know, a million, $1 million, $2 million aggregate general liability insurance, $300,000 per accident, $100,000 for bodily injury, $50,000 as a property damage coverage, and another $50,000 bond in the name of the Secretary of State and the people of Illinois. And that would conclude my presentation.
Okay, thank you. I have just one question to start.
Sure.
As I understand it, the place that's going to be conditioning the vehicles is somewhere in the north side of Chicago. What do you do if the vehicle gets dirty in transit, in terms of getting it cleaned?
I didn't really quite understand the question. Are you referring to if a vehicle comes in, needs to get detailed?
Yes.
Okay. So, all the vehicles before they're put up for sale, obviously, they have to go through a quality assurance and quality inspection. And so, that's where that takes place. So, the vehicles, the first place of transit coming from the auction or wherever, you know, I would purchase the vehicles from, would go straight to the mechanic. They would get, you know, they would get checked out and make sure they're in good working order, good working condition, and ready to be sold. From that point, they would go get detailed, and then they would end up at the unit.
So, what happens if the vehicle gets dirty in between the time it's detailed off-site and it shows up at Ambrogio?
I mean, if, in that case, I guess the filter would be on the exterior of the vehicle, and then I just run it through a car wash-
Okay.
...in the nearby area, gas station car wash or something of that sort.
Okay, all right. Yes, Dave?
So, the vehicles that are in your inventory and available for sale, can you clarify where those will be stored?
Inside the warehouse.
Okay. So, if anybody chooses to, again, just for clarification, to want to do an actual walk-around and test drive, they'll come to your facility, pull it out, take it out and test drive, and then come back inside, correct?
Correct. Not storing vehicles outside.
Parked out front for convenience purposes.
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
How many, how many vehicles will you store there?
Inside the warehouse, I would say there's ample amount of room for at least 10 vehicles. And if business does scale up forward beyond that, then I would look to expand into an auxiliary storage lot.
Where, where's that?
I would look to expand into an auxiliary storage lot, but I wouldn't be storing the vehicles on the premise property as, you know, it is shared space, so I have to be mindful of the tenants, the other tenants in the complex as well.
I guess I have one question. What is a virtual test drive?
A virtual test drive. I'm glad you asked. So, it's, it would be, it would consist of me doing a 3D walk-around, you know, just taking a wide-angle video around the car with the car on, and then, you know, I'd go up close to the engine, to the exhaust, and I would go underneath the vehicle, you know, all recording all of this, showing you the condition and, you know, the vehicle in general. And then, I would take the vehicle on a road trip, or not a road trip, but a test drive while recording. So, I would, there's multiple ways that this can be done. Either the phone can be placed on a dash mount, or you can wear a GoPro, like, kind of like a body camera, kind of going over. It's a 10, 15-second, you know, video, just highlighting outside, inside, interior, and then a quick test drive. And then, followed with that will be a mechanic inspection report.
Sounds like a YouTube video.
You own a dealership currently?
I do not, no.
Okay. You've done this before, then, with internet sales?
Yes.
You're, you're in sales now?
I am not in now. I'm looking, I was working with somebody else before, and now I'm trying to kind of branch off and do my own thing. I don't want any partnerships, so I kind of wanted to do my own establishment.
All right. I just, I know this sounds silly, but I have to do it for the record. It's a public hearing. I have to open the floor to the public.
Sure.
There's nobody here. I'm closing the floor to the public. Any other discussion? If not, it sounds like a motion would be in order. Okay. Leanna, go ahead.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation and the petition of Said Mubasher for a special use permit to allow the establishment in operation of a vehicle dealership fully enclosed on property located at 83 Ambrogio Drive, Unit C.
A motion, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pfaff. Any discussion? Joanna, can we roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. As, as you know, we are a recommending body, and staff will let you know when the village board will meet to make a final decision.
Sure.
Thanks and good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Have a nice night, all.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda technically is a public hearing, correct?
It is a public hearing, yes.
For a zoning text amendment, easy for me to say this evening, zoning text amendments being presented by staff.
Yes. So, we actually have four separate items within the text amendment. We're going to kind of break them down one by one and just run through each of them at a time, vote on each of them individually, and then pass those recommendations on up to the planning and, or, pass those recommendations on up to the village board, their final authorization. So, the first one is fence pertains to the open fence and closed fence definition, so I will let Autrian do an explanation on that one.
Okay. So, staff is proposing to change the definition of semi-open fence from a fence that has over its entirety more than 50% of the superficial surface consisting of regularly distributed openings, to a fence that has over its entirety at least 50% of the superficial surface consisting of regularly distributed openings. This is being proposed because the more than 50% part of that definition excludes fences that can be purchased with exactly 50% of openness, but not slightly more. This change shouldn't result in a noticeable difference in the field. Accordingly, the definition of a closed fence will also need to be amended from a fence that has no more than 50% of the superficial surface consisting of regularly distributed openings to a fence that has less than 50% of the superficial surface consisting of regularly distributed openings to prevent the overlap of definitions.
So, it's really as simple as existing ordinance doesn't have exactly 50% covered?
Correct.
Okay.
And we want to include that as part of the open fence definition, so that if it is a exact 50% open, then it is qualified as an open fence.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this one? If not, seems pretty technical to me. And if not, a motion would be in order?
Good.
Okay.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the petition of the Village of Gurnee to amend Article 2.1 definition of general terms as follows. Fence semi-open, a fence that has over its entirety at least 50% of the superficial surface consisting of regular distributed openings. Fence closed, a fence that has over its entirety less than 50% of the superficial surface, surface consisting regularly of distributed openings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Was that you, Dane?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Joanna, can we roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Just glad I didn't have to say superficial. All right, next one.
Okay, the next one deals with the office above ground floor in our 01 zoning district. This one was subject of an informal in front of this board early June. So, Autrian, let you handle the details.
Sure. So, on June 6th, the board discussed Mr. Larry May's informal request for a text amendment allowing, to allow dwelling units above the ground floor in the 01 restricted office district by right. Currently, this use is not permitted by right or a special use in the 01 district, but it is a permitted use in four of the village's commercial districts, C1 through C4. At the June 6th meeting, the board discussed weak office market due to remote or hybrid working situations and seemed receptive to the idea, but wanted more information on how other communities address this use. So, staff surveyed seven, seven communities, including Lincolnshire, Lindenhurst, Lake Bluff, Mandeline, Libertyville, Buffalo Grove, and Graves Lake, and found that none allow residential above the ground floor in their office zoning districts. But five of them allow residential above the ground floor in some of their commercial districts, mostly in the downtown area, and one is in the process of examining the code and may make a change in the future to allow this opportunity. The 01 district allows a maximum height of 40 feet, which could accommodate three stories, although most of the buildings in the 01 district are currently two stories. Staff believes that the opportunity to utilize upper floors for residential uses could be attractive as we allow in our commercial districts. In addition, the 01 district's purpose statement supports small-scale offices in the district, which would probably be more compatible with potential residential, residential use than commercial that already allows residential above the first floor. Plus, the amendment would be compatible with the village's comprehensive land use plan, plan policy of allowing for a diversity, diverse range of housing types, including areas of higher density and mixed-use developments.
Okay, thank you. My recollection from the informal was that we all seemed pretty warm and receptive to the concept. Has, has anybody had a change of heart since we talked? Yeah, go ahead.
No, I supported then during that formal, and I still today, and I think it's important to note, it wasn't really discussed in the informal, but the comment that was made in the notes reiterated about the position stated in our plan that we should be working toward and having a vision toward having a mix of housing and opportunity for us to actually execute that, put a lot of effort over the years in developing up with this company. Remember, we have an opportunity to lean on it, guide.
Well said. Thank you.
That's one question I have thought. So, if there's a building in an 01 and it's a three-story, and you have offices on the first and second floors, could the third floor necessarily then be residential?
It could potentially, yes. Most likely, you would have two levels of residential above a office, but it potentially could be allowed. Mind you that there are building code implications to having mixed use, so the building has fire separated between the residential and the office uses. So, there is some foresight and some planning that has to do with it, but it could be a third-floor residential above 1 and 2.
And, and do we have that? I'm thinking specifically of the development on, at least, where, where I think we have 01. retrofit nation, where that's, I think, a three-story development, I believe.
Two-story.
A two-story.
Yep.
So, in, in concept, that could be converted if you...
It could be converted, but once again, you have, have fire separations, you have to have separate exiting for the residential, then you can't have residential exiting through a, a higher risk category. So, going from residential to office would be considered a higher risk, so it would have to have its own separate exit. It's going to be very difficult retrofit buildings. You know, it'd be more practical, and I think we would see this more in new construction, where it's set up for that from the...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No. I, I never really had a warm, fuzzy feeling about this. I think it's, I think it's kind of an odd mix, although I do understand exactly why they're doing it, and especially with the articles we have here, there's definitely not a whole lot of demand for office space, but I just think it's a strange mix. If you have, like, on the corner of Washington and 21, for instance, there is an insurance company, and I believe that's two stories in a 01, and you have people living above an insurance company. But, it sounds to me like it's not all that easy to convert a building. So, I guess if it was going to be all new construction mainly, was set up to do that to begin with, not only would the tenants know what was, they were expecting, but the building would be designed to hold that. I'm hoping.
If there's no other discussion, a motion would be in order. Go ahead.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation and the petition of the Village of Gurnee to amend Article 8.1 use matrix to add dwelling unit above ground floor as a permitted use in the 01 district.
Second by Mr. Nordentraff. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Okay, the next one relates to our landscape buffer setbacks and requirements between non-residential and residential districts. Turn it over to Autrian again.
Okay. So, currently, the code requires landscape and screening buffer yard of 10 feet between properties under cer- certain situations such as when a non-residential district abuts a residential district, or when a non-residential district is located within a residential district. So far, the village utilized planned unit development and/or annexation agreements to increase this buffer, these buffer yards, because we felt 10 feet was deficient. Now, more developments are proposed with minimal buffers on straight-zoned properties or on properties with expired planned unit developments or annexation agreements. Staff believes that the buffer yards should be increased from 10 feet to 30 feet, as 30 feet is an appropriate depth to, to establish the required landscaping, landscape plantings. In addition, staff is proposing to tweak one of the situations in which this buffer yard is required, which is where a non-residential district abuts a residential district. Staff is proposing to change this to where a non-residential district abuts a residential district and where the use in the residential district is residential. This change would lead to effectively relieving a new non-residential development that abuts a residentially zoned district, which is improved by a non-residential use, such as public utility, public office, and et cetera, from meeting the buffer yard requirement. Finally, code requires the installation of a minimum four-foot-tall solid fence, wall, or continuous hedge, excuse me, hedge along 100% of the yard length when a multifamily dwelling abuts R1 through R4 districts, or where a multifamily dwelling is located within NR1 through R4 district, or where a residential use is located within a residential district, or where a non-residential district abuts a residential district. Accordingly, staff is proposing to increase the screening height to six feet, add the use of a berm as another screening alternative, and allow a combination of any screening type to suffice.
Okay, thank you. So, so from my perspective, what we're trying to do here is codify what we've been accomplishing in the past between PUD and annus, annexation agreements, so that no one can sneak in under straight zoning and kind of backdoor what we're trying to prevent.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
A motion to forward a favorable recommendation of the petition of the Village of Gurnee to amend Article 12.4.3 required rear and interior set-side setback buffer yard landscape as follows. 12.4.3 B3, where a non-residential district abuts a residential district and where the use in the residential district is residential. 12.4.3 C1, a buffer yard with must be a minimum of 30 feet. 12.4.3 C6, a solid fence, wall, berm, continuous hedge, or any combination thereof, a minimum of six feet in height, must be erected along 100% of the yard length in the following instances.
Was that you, Todd? Second by, by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Joanna, can we... Shall we, can we have a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Okay, final one pertains to animal care facilities. With twenty fifteen code update, we kind of consolidated some of our animal care facilities, maybe in error as we have had some examples of this. So I will let Autryan kind of run through what the plan is.
Okay, so staff became concerned about the zoning regulations of animal uses when an animal daycare facility opened in a commercial strip center adjacent to a restaurant. In the past, the village zoning ordinance only provided regulations for animal hospital or veterin- veterinarian, sorry for my English here, veterinarian clinic and kennel and did not allow other animal businesses such as dog grooming, pet hotel, or pet daycare center. As part of the twenty fifteen zoning ordinance update, animal uses except kennels were all grouped under the category of animal care facilities and were regulated the same. These types of businesses, per the definition of the current zoning ordinance, include animal hospital or vet clinics where animals may be boarded during their convalesces, pet grooming and also pet boarding facilities where animals are boarded during the day or for overnight stays similar to pet daycare and pet hotels. Animal daycare facilities require a special use in the C one district and are permitted by right in the C two, C three, I one, and I two districts. The kennels are defined and regulated separately and are permitted by right in I one and P districts and by way of a special use permit in the C three district. Staff is concerned that these are uses grouped in the animal care facilities definition that may create negative impact on public health and safety for businesses and residents due to excessive noise or odor from animals or the limitations to provide for adequate animal waste disposal within confined areas and the ability to maintain animal housing and separate them from the general public. Specifically, healthy animals that are being groomed, cared for in large groups during the day or boarded overnight may have different and more significant impacts than animals being seen at an animal hospital during the day or convalescing overnight due to sickness, injury, or surgery. On August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the village board approved a six-month moratorium on animal care facilities in the commercial zoning districts to provide staff time to address these concerns. Staff's intent to discuss the matter is, staff's intent is to discuss the matter to obtain your feedback. To initiate the discussion, staff has drafted some text amendments, including creation of an overall category, which is called animal-related services with a new definition, creation of subcategories for animal daycare, animal hotel, animal grooming, animal hospital, or vet clinic, and with their new definitions. Moving kennel use from its classification of industrial to the overall category of animal-related services. Proposed animal hospital or vet clinic use will be treated the same as the existing animal care facility. Requiring a special use permit for animal daycare, animal hotel, and animal grooming in the C one and C two districts and permitting them in I one and I two districts by right. Removing kennels from the C three and I one districts as a special use and adding it as a special use in the I two and I three districts. Organizing the use standards section to provide general standards that apply to all animal-related services and additional specific standards for each subcategory. Creation of new use standards, basically separation from residential zoning requiring amount, required amount and location of exterior activity areas and et cetera, and elimination of others, other standards. After discussing if P Z B believes further research will be needed, the hearing can be continued to a later date.
Okay. When does the moratorium really expire?
Six months from, I think it was July thirty-first when it was moving into the calendar.
Okay.
Got plenty of time.
Okay.
It's correct. Thirty-first hasn't happened yet.
July thirty-first, a regular meeting?
Yes.
In any regard, it was in July.
It was in July.
Okay. Thoughts?
I was just wondering if someone from staff can help me better understand really what the difference is between animal daycare and animal, not hospital, hotel. What is the?
Some places, I know anyway, because I have dogs and I board them. Some places only accept daycare for, just for the day, and then you come and pick them up at the end of the day. They don't board overnight. That's, I believe, what they're talking about here. But then you have boarding, where they board for any length of time.
Well, in the definition, it states under animal daycare that pets are typically boarded for the day, though overnight boarding may be. So that turns it into hotel.
Yeah.
Agreed. There's a little bit of overlap between animal daycare with that boarding provision with animal hotel, which is boarding as well as kennel, which also includes a boarding capacity.
Is there a limit on the hotel stay? As like the kennel, I think, may be a longer, it notes over six months. So is there a maximum on the hotel stay?
As of now, there is no maximum, but you can always add it.
The animal hotel concept is kind of a new concept. It was Autryan, you know, struggled to find a good, clean definition. So it's something that we're trying to put together to cover all bases of things that we've seen applications for. Try to make sure that, you know, that make sure that they're in the right locations under the right oversight within the zoning code. So I think if we want to completely segregate the overnight and the day, I think that would be a logical separation. Have different locations and different authorizations required for those different uses. Because I think a daytime stay is, you know, can be considerably different than a nighttime stay.
Yes. So would we be better served not getting hung up on labels and really focus in on whether it's a twenty-four-hour-a-day operation or a twelve-hour-day operation?
I would advise, let's start looking at the use chart, start there. And, you know, we can kind of work our way backwards to the definitions, if that makes sense.
Have you looked at other villages?
Yes, before my time, the previous senior planner, she did a very, very detailed research of other communities. I don't have all the names, but I believe like Mandaline, Libertyville, Highland Park. These are like some of the communities that were researched, Grayslake. These are the communities that were researched. So basically, a lot of these definitions or, you know, standards that we borrowed from other communities and how they treated, you know, daycares for pets or hotels. Hotels are, is like, that is a different one. But, you know, daycare and grooming and also like how they allow kennels or animal hospital or vet clinic. So yes, there has been some research of the other communities.
Run into the same issues with a daycare versus a boarding or a pet hotel? I mean, you'll have the noise, you still have waste disposal.
Yes, it's just the overnight hours would be eliminated out of the daycare consideration and what would be in place for the overnight.
So as we're thinking about this, we should be thinking whether or not it's a twenty-four-seven operation or quote-unquote extended normal business hour situation.
Exactly. So I think a good assumption, you know, for the animal daycare, if we could take out that boarding provision, I think that would make sense because the overnight boarding, at the point that it goes into an overnight boarding, I think it should go to either the hotel or to the kennel provision.
Oh, just a different name, boarding facility? Sounds a little sweeter.
And I know there's, and I know Tracy's concept of a kennel is a little different than mine. When I think of kennel, I think more. She thinks of kennel, it's more of the breeding and, you know, the commercial production of animals versus a, you know, care for somebody else's animal.
Okay, but it still comes down to whether or not it's a twenty-four-hour-day operation.
So there are some similarities, but it's, you know, two different perspectives. Both of them are classified as kennels, you know, but it's just a little bit different perspective of what we're meaning. So we can fine-tune those definitions a little bit and, you know, make sure we're in the right place with the use list.
So we definitely want to say for the animal daycare that overnight boarding is prohibited.
That would be my initial take on this, just to clearly delineate between the daycare, the night care, and the overnight care.
So once we get that part sorted out with the right definitions, you're looking for feedback in terms of which zoning districts would the twenty-four-seven be acceptable? Okay.
So the daycare, using it as a, you know, just a daycare, no overnight boarding, is proposed as a special in C one and C two, permitted in C three, I one, and I two. Daytime use only. And as it is written here, you know, the animal hotel has those exact same visions.
Yes, so basically, both of them, both daycare and hotel, they are just defined separately. But the use standard and also the districts that they are allowed via, you know, by right or permit, special use, they are exactly the same. They are just, the definitions are separate the way that it is now.
And the veterinary clinic has always been C two permitted, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And that can, a veterinary clinic can be open twenty-four hours a day, right?
It can be, yes.
If they wanted to board, then that would be a separate issue for them. They would become a boarding facility. I know.
As far as the vet clinic?
Yeah.
Most vet clinics will board.
Right.
That's not their principal use. That's kind of an ancillary use. That's kind of how we would handle that. Their principal business is a vet clinic. Someone's in a pension, they need a place for an animal who doesn't do well in a large environment. Kennel, you know, they could.
If they have a kennel as an option, like, for instance, they're not in our village anymore, but the animal hospital of Gurnee has a boarding facility in addition to their veterinarian. I mean, it's in the same building, though.
You'd have to look at what the principal use is versus what their use is.
How do you know that? So you determine what percentage of their business is veterinary?
It can be what percentage of the floor space is, or what percent of the revenue is in is their principal business. That's a typical analysis that we do with a lot of business. Special days, businesses, nobody does just one thing anymore. They do several different things. So that's one of the struggles. We have to try to determine what their principal business is and what their ancillary ones. And if the ancillary are going to work with the principal and the, or to compete against it, and if there's any problems, an analysis, right?
Well, since we're touching this, is it going to be something that we're going to codify then? Seventy, thirty, sixty, forty, forty-nine, fifty-one, like?
Right now, it's greater than fifty percent for the principal business. Part of the zoning code.
To me, like, it would cause the same issues as a boarding facility. Have the same exact problems with everything. I mean, some places it would work fine, but others not so well.
So if we were to combine animal daycare and animal leave those, leave it as special in C one, C two, permitted in C three, I one, and I two? That makes sense? It's an extended business hours here, or whether it's an overnight care? Is there any differentiation that we need to see between those facilities?
Well, it's spelled out the same as far as in the use matrix, correct?
And also in the actual use, they are, they have exactly same, the same regulations. They are just defined separately.
Use standards that are attached to it.
Right. I would think they'd both end up causing the same problems unless the daycare ended really early. I mean, otherwise, if you get into, like, if you had a restaurant next, get into hours, you end up with the same problem. I know of one, it's not there anymore, but I used to go to a facility on one thirty-seven and it was very noisy, strip mall. They boarded not only dogs, but birds and it's extremely loud. So.
Just trying to imagine that in my head.
Yeah, yeah. So if you were next door to them, unless you've got a good brick wall between the two of you, it was kind of obnoxious.
Do we regulate the business hours for the daycare and the grooming? Five, or is it, can it be nine?
No proposed hours of operation in this. Something we can look to incorporate, you know, that everything's on the table at this.
We actually proposed the operation hour of like six AM to ten PM for vets and daycare and hotels for out, exterior, you know, exercises. So if they are having, because they cannot stop their operations if they have overnight, you know, but anything that happens during night, it has to be indoors. Anything that, you know, during like, you know, these hours, they can just like, you know, have the exterior exercise of like pets and anything else.
I mean, generally speaking, businesses, excuse me, businesses in C two are what I'll call normal business hours or extended business hours, right? I think that should be our guiding force in terms of not even allowing a special use for something that's twenty-four hours in those districts.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Huh?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, the operation should be consistent with the rest of the business community in that zoning district. Would be my, my thought. Am I missing something?
Regret the special use condition, special analysis.
Yeah.
Right.
Can it be established in the special use process, or does it need spelled out?
Well, I think the special use process gives us a lot of latitude in terms of whether or not it's compatible with the surrounding. Compatible with, with the surrounding operations and it would have to get past us.
Yeah, I, I certainly appreciate that we're looking at it from a special use, which the chairman's point, it gives us a lot of latitude. I, I just worry about to that point that the, you know, the, the C two community, commercial district is impacted by operations that are not consistent with the balance of the community, uh, in that, in that area. And then have we set any precedent that would preclude us from denying a special use permit if we already have that, particularly in the C two. You know, it was mentioned at the beginning of this that, you know, this came to, to the fore. I'm sure we were looking at it before, but the establishment of the facility literally between two restaurants. I would have seen as not consistent with the balance of that strip if we, if we had this then, but because this is said, I get it, you know, we can look at it and moving forward. I just, I just think that if we're going to look at the zoning, do we move it all into something that would be more compatible with a zoning that is not interfering with the balance of the use of that, you know, community district?
You'd want the, uh, the, the vet clinic to be also special? As opposed to embedded under C two?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't think any of them should be outright permitted in C two.
Not even the animal hospital?
No.
Then all.
Well.
But.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's like, it's the boarding part of it. That, that clinic part of it that we can probably issue. So.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if it's, I don't know if we can split hairs here, but if that makes up boarding, are we okay with that? Special use, evaluate own merits as. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing.
Most vet clinics have some type of boarding, just like have they done some type of medical procedure?
They have to.
Just to observe it at.
Yeah.
Little boarding area.
It becomes difficult for us to force anything like that. We can't, it's difficult for us to differentiate which animals are there for convalescence, which ones are there for boarding.
Yes, to your point, you know, the, the, and I don't want to name specific businesses, but it operated in that facility for probably a couple of decades, didn't it? Gurnee Animal.
Uh, the Animal Hospital Gurnee?
Oh, oh, behind where the.
They were behind Speedway for a while.
For years they were behind Speedway.
I think they boarded then though.
I know.
Probably had to have animals overnight. I'm sure they did because they had one of mine overnight. Yeah, I, I don't think you get the same kind of noise. Night because have as many animals. Starting, I mean, usually it's initiated by. You. Going, but.
Yeah, but.
I don't know.
But my concern about it being permitted is that there's no opportunity for anybody to really review the logistics of the, the clients entering or leaving the facility and, and how they're going to potentially interact with the surrounding businesses.
True, I agree.
I mean, where the old animal hospital used to be, I mean, it was kind of, I mean, it was near other things, but it, it wasn't immediately really adjacent to anything.
Standalone versus.
Yeah.
I thought it actually had other businesses in the same building.
I don't remember. It's been so long. I know it's probably been twenty-five years. But I mean, because these operations are, they're unique.
Right? But we should treat them that way.
Yeah. That's my thought.
Census says move animal hospital slash vet clinic to a special.
In C two.
C two.
Any thoughts on the animal grooming? If that one, right now it's consistent with the other ones, special in C one, C two permitted in C three, I one and I.
Uh huh.
Any thoughts on what they special in C one, C two being order duration?
I think that's my same concerns still apply. But I'm, I'm just one voice.
Just to play devil's advocate, you know, PetSmart allows you to bring your pets into the store with, so it's same kind of scenario. It's a general retail facility. Bring your dogs in with.
It's C two, right?
To Home Depot. You can bring them in Home Depot.
Um. Grooming facilities are generally fairly, well, they can be very small. I mean, with PetSmart's grooming facility is very small. I mean, overall compared to the building footprint.
And that one would, once again, in ancillary service for the major RE, so it would not trigger a special use permit, but if it was a standalone pet grooming service, you know, next door to PetSmart, that one would trigger a special.
Why would that trigger a special use?
If it's, if it's a standalone business.
Okay. I mean, the one that I go to.
Instead of sports, instead of sports clips, it's now a puppy clips. Next to Menard, so that one.
Would require a special use.
So like a hundred percent of its clientele is coming and going for grooming, whereas the PetSmart example is it's a fraction of what their total business is.
Exactly.
That makes sense to me.
But does, does a pet grooming facility generate enough traffic that that's an issue? Issue that you would have to have a special use permit?
That's the question.
I don't know that it's so much traffic as it is just the use itself. It's coming and going. I mean, again, if it's next to a restaurant, maybe that's something that maybe isn't available regardless of the traffic. Maybe.
The one I go.
Gives us a chance to put a set of eyes.
True.
Own merits based on facts.
True.
Otherwise it won't get.
So if we were to keep that as special in C one, C two permitted in C three, I one and I two proposed, and we change the animal hospital slash vet clinic back to special or to a special in C one, C two permitted in C three, I one and I two. In theory, we could compress all of the definitions back to basically our animal care facilities with the change that it's a special use permit in C one and C two permitted by right, C three, I one and I two.
And the C three district is fairly small, as I recall.
C three district's fairly small, C one's fairly small, C two is our, our bread and butter district, and we're basically changing it from permitted by right, you know, the lump of all the different animal care facilities. Changing that to a special in C two, that kind of simplifies this whole, um, text amendment, so we can, in theory, keep them lumped together, treat them all the same. Um, I would recommend that we do include the use standards that we have posed, uh, for eight two two to talk about the ratio of outdoor play area to the, the indoor area. Uh, that was one of the things that we, um, did not have with the most recent application. There's no outdoor play area offered at all. So we do want to trigger that and make sure that if you are doing boarding or daycare, that there is an outdoor play area for the animals. Um, so we would propose keeping that, but we may be able to keep all the other animal related services. If we're treating them the same in the use matrix, might as well just keep them compressed. Thoughts?
Makes sense.
Makes sense. I'll just ask one question.
Mm-hmm.
Um. None of us were involved in any of the discussions that led to the concern that led to the moratorium.
Mm-hmm.
You've presumably been in the thick of it. Um, will that satisfy what led to the moratorium?
What led to the moratorium was the permitted use in C.
Okay.
Are we then, um, and maybe I missed it, but are, are we, where are we, what are we doing with the kennels? Cause.
So let me. And.
There's a definition there.
We also did have a modification, a kennel, adding it to the I two, I three as specials and the taking it.
Out of C three.
C three as a special, taking it out of I one as a special, adding it into I two and I three as a special and public as a permitted use. We really haven't discussed that too much. To my knowledge, we don't have any kennels as we have defined in here right now in town. Um, so there's not, no one's knocking down our doors. We do have a little bit of overlapping definitions as far as the animal boarding is concerned.
Because in kennel it says.
Yes.
Uh, I can add a little bit to this. Uh, so the reason that we wanted to, we thought about like removing it completely from C three and I one was that there were like a few different areas in the village that they were budding, uh, single family residential districts, both I one and C three. So, uh, especially I one was the concern because there was like a section that, that was just like a random section that we were checking that it was surrounded by single family and it was I one and there was like a great chance that it could be developed as permitted, you know, use without even, uh, plan, you know, the planning and zoning board reviewing it. So.
And this, why is it permitted in the, the lands? Can you repeat that, Dave? I'm sorry. Why is it permitted by, by right in the public lands?
So it would be a government agency or government owned property.
Mm-hmm.
Project property. Do you have any insight onto that, Autryan?
Uh, that was Tracy's. I, I don't know. Sorry.
I take it that's strike through on I one.
Yes.
Permitted, so it's gone. There's no.
Out of consideration for C three and I.
And why?
And, uh, sorry, I just have to fix something here. That is already existing in P district. It is, uh, shown as red by mistake, but it is actually black. It is already allowed for kennels in P district. So it's not staff's recommendation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it would not be an issue?
Would not be a change.
Would not be a change.
It is not a change, yes. Had to be black in color. If you see down under industrial where we struck through kennel, you see that it, it was a special use in C three permitted in I one and also permitted in public district. So just moved up and we kept public.
Okay. Any concern with removing them out of the C three and I one? And doing commercial kennel?
We don't have one at all. I'm okay with.
It's just getting it away from the resident.
Right.
Okay. That's important, yeah.
And again, if it's in the P district, it would have to be approved, but it was permitted.
It would have to be permitted by.
Government.
By the village if we have zoning authority. Exceptions to that, uh, where we do not have zoning authority. Matter.
But P is literally like park district.
Schools.
Schools, yeah. Village. Township, yeah.
Some of the comm ed right of ways are.
United States government, Illinois government. I mean, that's, I mean.
Post office.
Okay.
Police department training facility or something like that where police dogs, I, I, I'm not sure what origin of this would be, but it may be something along that.
But if it's any of those things, it's going to be a small operation. It's not going to generate a lot of commercial, second generate.
Yeah, the only, only one I can think of is like Tops, which is over on one twenty in Grayslake.
Yep.
It's a canine breeding, dog training facility, dogs. So that's the only thing that I could think of.
Okay. And is that one public?
That one's a private industry.
Okay.
They train any dog.
Okay. All right, um. Have we given you enough to make motion or should we continue it?
Um. Real quick, let's take a quick look at the use standards. Um, what I'm, what we would propose is to kind of keep all the uh, as proposed, but we'll treat them all the same.
Okay.
Um. The use standards, like I said, basically adding the hours for outdoor play area. Adding the outdoor exercise area requirements based on the size.
They're required?
They would be required to have an outdoor area. Overnight boarding and dog. Most of them have, the most recent did not. So. By not.
Excuse me, you mean kennels, right? Cause it's just listed on their kennels that, that the specific requirement for outdoors, having outdoors. So there is like a general, there are like some general requirements that are applicable to all of them. And then every single use has its additional standards, you know, written on it. So.
C is animal daycare and hotel, and that one includes two hundred square feet for every thousand.
Yes, but not vet clinic or yes.
Correct.
When it says the animal grooming, no exterior activity area is permitted for animal grooming services unless the use is conducted ancillary to other animal related services. What is?
It's, so it have an animal daycare, a dog daycare, and they also do grooming.
Right. But then they can do the grooming outside?
They can do the grooming, well, the, the facility would have an outdoor play area because that's required as part of the animal daycare. The prohibition of having any outdoors areas under animal grooming would be negated as you have the requirement for the outdoor play area as part of the dog daycare.
But they couldn't groom outside.
They couldn't groom outside, no.
Okay. So. We're probably better off continuing it, right?
You would like to continue what we can?
I mean. What's, what's your comfort zone in terms of?
The definitions, because we're treating them all the same, I think we're okay with the definitions as proposed. Standards, since we are treating them all the same, once again, um. Can make that recommendation if we're comfortable with that. If there's anything in the use standards. Concern, we can further discuss that. Otherwise, they're pretty straightforward. And that's basically the gist of it.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable either way, Dave.
Okay. Just whether we want to rehash it again or if we want.
Yeah.
Ready to, if we're to a point where we're ready to.
Right. What other opinions? I mean, you want to see it again or do you think we gave? I mean, you want to see it again or do you think we gave?
So if I understand correctly, really the only thing that's a change is the use.
Yeah.
And adding those additional use standard for all, for the animals.
For the facility.
The dog daycare for the outdoor, required outdoor play areas and things like that.
Uh, one, one other change that, uh, you probably have noticed in under general requirements, there is, uh, number five that is applicable to all of them, which is for nuisance. So, uh, we wanted this to be part of, uh, these regulations. So any type of nuisance that is defined by the village code, if it is categorized under one of those nuisance, then at that point, village has the authority to basically enforce, uh, you know, them to comply. That's something additional.
Does anybody want to see it again or are you comfortable with the direction? Okay. Well, yeah, okay.
So the, the only changes to the motion that would be included in your packet would be use matrix. And it would be here for some. Basically, we ended up only changing one, which is the vet clinic. Hospital. Including that one in the changes so that they are all C1, C1, C2 special use, C3, I1, I2. So that all of the stood animal care facility types. Minus the kennel, kennel would be the only one, its own separate matrix, and it would only be in the I2, I3. We can break the motion apart.
Or we can simplify it and say something, simplify it, say amend the animal care facility ordinances consistent with this evening's presentation.
That would work as well.
Got the recording to back you up then?
Uh huh.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So for animal daycare and hotel, it's 200 square feet of outdoor closed yard for every thousand square feet, principal structure.
Is that normal?
I mean. It is.
I don't know.
Oh, it is normal. Typically they have outdoor play areas for both the kennels and at the dog daycares. This one that most recently went in was somewhat unusual that there's no opportunity for outdoor.
Some of the facilities are and it wasn't.
Sure, I, I never brought that up anyway.
But it's also a hard to their business.
Yeah.
First inside versus inside. Speak.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? We'd like to advance the motion.
Okay. I move, we forward a favorable recommendation for the proposed text amendments under the umbrella of animal care facilities to include sections, definitions, use standards, site development standards and required off street parking as submitted this evening and the use matrix section discussed and amended to change the animal hospital and vet clinic from permitted in C2 to special use in C2.
I believe that covers.
Okay. Was that you, Todd?
Yes.
Any discussion with C1 involved in that too?
It was, that was as proposed, C1 was as proposed, sorry, special.
Okay.
Did we ever open the door to help?
Yeah, we did.
Then, okay.
Okay, a long time ago.
Okay.
And I, when I acknowledged there was nobody here.
Okay.
Okay. I thought about that like 10 minutes ago too. All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Well done, not a very complicated.
Muddled our way through it.
We muddled our way through it as always. Um, so that was the last of them, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, do we have anything on the calendar for the six?
Uh, I don't believe we have a, uh, any public hearings, but we may have a couple. Now I've got a right of way vacation and may.
Okay.
Uh, we, we actually do have.
Do have a public.
Yes, Texas Roadhouse, I think that would be, yeah.
What is it? We're going to get a Texas roadhouse?
Oh, where they want to go.
Uh, it's the former Toys R Us site.
Oh, okay.
They're creating an outlaw out front, so.
That's a great restaurant.
Been working on that one for about two years now.
Okay. All right, so.
Just waiting for the Waffle House.
Working, working with the, for the, for the site plan work.
Okay.
Pretty good sized building, I take it they're turning it down and replacing it.
They are carrying off the front half of the Toys R Us building and creating a couple of outlots out front along the ring road.
More details on the sixth.
More details on the sixth.
All right, open the floor, I'm opening the floor to the public, there is no public. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
And try to stay out of the heat next week. It's supposed to get warm.
Good thing you got a.
But it's too hot.
Have you been walking over to, uh, Verson?
Um, my wife recently watched more than I do.
We actually went over, took my daughter over and we had a great joint, we joined.
Wine club.
Actually worked out pretty well.
She, she, she's been there.